Bonnie Lake has produced thousands of volunteer hours for the improvement of the community with community volunteers and businesses generously contributing time, materials, and money toward needed improvement projects. And whereas Beautiful Beautify Bonnie Lake strives to inspire increasingly greater numbers of citizens and businesses to donate at least three hours each year to enhance the beauty of the city and providing a means to easily capture the goodwill of the citizens via willingness to create permanent and positive improvements to the city. And whereas the City of Bonnie Lake wishes to recognize the efforts of Beautify Bonnie Lake on its 20th annual event. And whereas Beautify Bonnie Lake is a registered charitable 501(c)(3) organization organized to engage the community in positive and charitable activities and to enhance the livability of the city. Now therefore, I Terry Carter, Mayor of the City of Bonnie Lake, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as Beautify Bonnie Lake Month. And applaud BBL for their creativity in continuing this event and urge all citizens, property owners, and businesses to participate in Beautify Bonnie Lake and support this great community effort by donating time, labor, talents, materials, and monetary contributions to the local improvement projects associated with this wonderful event. Thank you. Yeah. Oh. Please. Yeah.
So we've had 20 years of Beautify Bonnie Lake started in 2004. So we created a quilt of all the year shirts and for display in the city hall.
Well, that's amazing.
So we would like to present this to you guys so you can put it somewhere, wherever you want to. It has little holders, so you can put it on the stairwell if you want to.
One more.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
Basically over here.
I'll go back. Always great.
Okay.
Ready?
Very cool.
Very cool.
You guys think that one's cool, you should see the one they made for Bonnie Lake High School. It's pretty cool.
Thank you. All right, we now have a presentation from the Bonnie Lake Food Bank. I'll hand the floor over to CEO Stacy Sernich.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Carter and council and administration, so good to be here. I think I have a presentation. Are we pulling it up? Perfect.
Here we go.
I feel very inadequate without matching outfits with the team. And I don't have a gift that that's lovely, but thanks for having me anyway. And I first wanted to start off by introducing my board member Todd Allen, who is in the back row. Todd Allen actually in February of 2020 formed a hiring committee to hire me. It lasted for two months or three months. Yep. Long enough to grill me and kind of put me through the wringer. I, at that point, had been a volunteer at the old Bonnie Lake Food Bank, and there wasn't even a place to interview me, so we used the library. And so that front room in the library has special meaning to me, as does Todd coming into our ethos as our vice president. So thanks for being here, Todd. All right, so we're here to talk about, you know, something amazing, which is the funding that the Bonnie Lake City Council awarded us in a time that we needed it most. It was unprecedented, what we've been through. And that layer of support, why it is so important to talk about that is there really isn't another city on the plateau that gave that much into an emergency relief system. So you're very forward thinking in that, but also it, like any good investment and any steward of investment, I was able to take that and have it be a multiplier for our community. In fact, it grew over a three-year period of time to over $6 million that we were able to put back into the community direct cash. Now, the trickle impact of that financially is, you know, upwards of 20 million. By offsetting, people can buy groceries and then pay their rent, keep their car, keep going to work, sometimes two or three jobs. That is our target audience right now. So with that, cue it up. Do I, oh, do I get to click it? Stop it. Okay. Oh, golly.
Page down. Oh, yeah. Be able to click down there.
Thanks so much. I'm flashing back for just a moment to our girl on Veterans Memorial, that building that's no longer there, but a lot of great things started there. So we're not going to talk bad about her tonight. The middle picture is yours truly, John Vodapitch, which was the first check that he walked across the parking lot and handed to me personally. It was huge. This was May, I believe. We were in crisis mode. We had $20,000 to our name, and we were staring down what I knew would not be, just the one year it would continue. And so that was extremely meaningful. It was a very exciting day, and we just, we look like kids, don't we, John? Yeah. The National Guard was with us during this time, which was beautiful, 18 months of their support. I just wanted to recognize that around this time that you awarded us that money, there were some pretty phenomenal things happening just down the block. Go ahead. Oh, I'm so used to telling people, I forget I'm the girl. Okay. $150,000, that is an investment in community impact and resiliency. As mentioned, we were able to build off that in a phenomenal way and create more resiliency in this community. We had applied, what we had discussed at that time was that it would allow us to pay for things like utilities, our leaseholds, things that are really hard to get grants for. You know, when people see a place like the market, it's, you know, very attractive. They want to invest in the pretty things, and nobody wants to help you with the garbage or the power bill. That just doesn't happen, but anybody that owns a business knows that that's a cost of doing business. So you were able to help us phenomenally, including technology, which we'll get to soon enough. Our regional impact happened immediately. As soon as the National Guard got here, as you know, we just took off. There was no way to not serve these rural communities. 75% of who we serve still remains in the city of Bonnie Lake, in Bonnie Lake proper. So we serve a lot of unincorporated areas. The farm that we're at right now continues to be the epicenter of who we serve. But like I like to state, if you live in the town of Carbonado and you ran out of food or gas, that's the end of the story. There isn't another part to it. We'll talk more about that, too. So impact by numbers, this, you know, I'm not going to roll call it, but over the last three years that you have helped provide financial scaffolding, over 4 million pounds of food went out. 12,000 volunteer shifts were served. It is an incredible story, and we so appreciate you being partners in that. Annually now, we have over 244,000 individuals visit the market. That's cumulative. Food bank math is repetitive math. 10,000 plus visits to the lockers annually, and that number is going up. And the annual number of food delivered to kids is over 7,000. It's incredible. Our highest demographic that we are registering right now are senior citizens. We've been doing outreach at the Senior Center, the Buckley Senior Center, the entire plateau. I do not like to take credit for anything that we do, but the one group of people that I will allow to call me anything other than Stacy are older adults that shop from nine to 10. They call me the entrepreneur. And I think that that is very telling about how a space can change how people think about themselves. And when somebody is feeling like they've worked hard their entire life and never imagined that they would be at a food bank, it's much easier to think of me as a business person than somebody that runs a charity. And so it is a little bit of a trauma-informed approach. So everybody likes coming to the market, and in fact, if some of our little gals don't show up, they make our front desk call, call home and see if little Dorothy is going to be coming next week. We started opening from nine to 10, which is, I'm from Nordstrom, and mall walkers and senior citizens can get into Nordstrom a half hour before the store is open. Now you know, but it's kind of a best kept secret. You can come in and get cheap coffee and hang out. We do that at the market. So from nine to 10, that's senior hour, and it's pretty festive, actually. The Locker Network, which you have also been in partnership with us in a multitude of ways, is now completing Phase Two. So up on the map, I also did not, Sadie asked me to make sure and let you know that I had included some other things. I wanted to make sure that you saw the map when I was talking about kind of where we're at, because conceptually, you know, when you talk about a network, it's much easier to describe that when you see it. So Phase One, Councilmember Morrell and Pierce County Council invested in something that was unimaginable. It was the first in the nation. There was nothing to benchmark. It was a complete dream that had happened in that old building down the way. When somebody invests in you in that way, you need to take it through the finish line. And we did. Phase One is number one in the nation in terms of social impact and usage. Phase Two, Representative Shire begins next week. We launched her locker out in Carbonado. We were working with Mayor VC and his wife Denise out there and signed an MOU and a contract. That locker, population in Carbonado is around 700. So this gives you kind of a concept of food insecurity in rural areas, which by the way, food insecurity in rural areas is extreme. It is a very, a very widely discussed topic and invested in topic around the nation right now. So Carbonado, population 700, we screwed the lockers into the ground on a Friday, we fired them up on a Monday, and by Tuesday, 80 families were in need of support. So about 40% of the population. Phase Three is with Representative Strickland, and we will be working on youth and college hunger. 52% of students at Pierce County are experiencing food insecurity, and some of them are unenrolling to address basic needs. So you can't unknow some of those things, right? Our locker is here, right across the parking lot. Thank you so much. Thank you for getting that over the finish line for us. These are complex to manage multi-sector relationships. Mayor Carter was a phenomenal champion of that. We thank you. It's not easy to stand beside somebody that says things for the first time and mean it. So I really appreciate that. As we, kind of a same situation where you fire that up, and immediately we were able to address human need, in particular with the community court system. And people are showing up here with hungry children, and we're able to address that immediately with Judge Joanna Daniels. There is not one part of the county that I can travel in, and that's pretty much my full-time job now, that I don't hear about Judge Daniels and that program. They are held up as true examples of how we need to guide people through with the scaffolding of support to be able to get to where they need to so that they can take off and flourish. So thank you for that. It's a village. Here's some village members right here. The ribbon cutting was amazing. That day, things are kind of hush-hush, but the Gates Foundation was there that day and another, quite a few other people that don't want to be mentioned. It was seen widely and heard about widely. I so excited about being able to unveil that to the community and show multi-sector partnership. Mayor Carter was also at the league at Good Day Seattle. That was amazing. Our relationships with the city continues to grow as we grow. I'm thankful for that. So another kind of interesting way, so sometimes there are partnership agreements that are financial. Some of them are MOUs, some of them are leaseholds, but then there's other kinds of relationships, as Jason Sullivan knows, where capacity, so there aren't very many places, by the way, where you can send $400,000 of refrigerators with computers on them and drop them off at a loading dock and have anybody insure you to hold them. So this is a way that Bonnie Lake, Jason Sullivan, and Todd Bright showed up for us and had a great idea. And what this meant was that I was able to get federal funding to help address a rural region. This is a regional problem. And instead of paying $13,000 every time one of those refrigerators shipped on a freight truck from North Carolina, in which they send a pilot car with people to unload them, because that's how, that's how frantic they are. That's not a normal loading dock. You can't find it. I wouldn't be able to insure any place. And they're nine feet, nine feet wide and seven feet tall. It's just not a usual situation. Jason had this great idea, let's offload them here. So instead of paying $13,000 four times, I paid $13,000 one time. Those are public funds put to use, and the ROI on that is such a multiplier that it's almost unquantifiable. So thank you. That's like the real deal. Farm to fork, we continue because of all of these great relationships, we can then leverage our funding and put it right back into the local economy. We have hit 2 million now, and that is anything from people that help us with our refrigeration, our concrete. We, you know, Boone Electric continues to be amazing. We pay local contractors to come and help us. With that, we're able to invest in local farmers. It's crazy, at the beginning of the pandemic, when I was at that building, I was so perplexed as somebody that has worked in supply chain my whole life, that we had lines of hungry people and five miles down the road, did you guys know the valley there? It's in the top five soil density, like the quality of it in the world. So food is being grown, the highest quality available food is right down the road, as the crow flies, I can see it, and I'm on top of a hill with a bunch of hungry people and not enough money or food to feed them, while they're throwing their food in the trash. That is insanity, right? When we were able to kind of put those two things together and then double down on investment, we were then able to create that circular economy. What that looks like today, what it looked like in the onset, I was able to get funding to do direct purchases. Now what we're able to do is create opportunity for these farmers. So Pat is a Bonnie Lake resident. He is the bottom middle row. If you don't know him, you need to. He's awesome. Go to Rainier Fresh. So over the last three years, we've been able to invest between 50 and 75,000 into Pat's farm with direct purchasing. All of that food went to medically fragile and vulnerable people that needed high-density nutrition. Because of that safety net over a three-year period of time, Pat was able to level up his business and then buy another business, a grocery store that would have gone under in Buckley. So the multiplier of economy keeps going, and Mom's microgreen is still flourishing, as is Rainier Fresh. I just like to show our partners anytime I can. You all are on there, everybody's on there. I'm so thankful for everything that has transpired. It's more than just a transaction for us. I think it's been such an investment in the citizens of Bonnie Lake and the greater community. We are positioning ourselves to do more. 600 million hit the federal stream for rural investment. We're looking to build a resiliency. We need USDA property to do that in a USDA rural zone. I continue to look, I have scoured what feels like the county, but I continue to look for anywhere between 10 and 20 acres, we will be able to invest upwards of 20 million into that for a long-term emergency management and resiliency facility. I hope to be able to do that up on the plateau. That would be my dream to stay up here and do that. We are hunting countywide currently. So I, I thank you for the start that you gave us. We absolutely want to finish the job up here. And just, I don't know how, how many other ways I can thank you, but thanks.
Thank you. And with that, actually, Stacy, if you want to come back up here, I actually have a final check for you to present, so it's my great honor to do so. Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay. Want to play hearings? No public hearings, we'll go on to citizen comments. This is your time to address the council and city business. For those attending virtually, please click the raise hand icon at the top of your screen if you would like to address the council. Anyone with the raised hand icon or who called in, your mics and cameras will be enabled. You will need to turn on your video microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. You will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Councilmember on past, Councilmember Dan Decker, I live at 2470 Street East, 98391. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance was written in August 1892 by a socialist, a socialist minister, Francis Bellamy. Pledge of Allegiance, the original pledge, I pledge allegiance to my flag and the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In 1923, the pledge was changed to read, "The flag of the United States of America," and so, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." God came into our pledge of allegiance, our Lord, in 1954. President Eisenhower encouraged Congress to add the words "under God," creating the 31-word pledge we say today. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." What do the words of the pledge mean? This is going to scare, scare anyone if they're Nazi or socialist or something other than a republic, because that's what we are. We're not a democracy, we are a republic. What does it mean to pledge? It's a formal promise of loyalty to the United States that a group of people say together, allegiance. What are we saying to give allegiance? It's an adherence like that of citizens to their country. We're coming together to mean what we say. Republic, a government having a chief of state who is not a monarch, a king, or something dictator, and who is, modern times, is usually a president. All power of the government belongs to the people. Hey, government, we own you, you're our servant. Representatives are voted by the people to do the will of the people, not the will of what they want from the stock market. I'm wondering when this, wondering when this will of the people will be understood by what we call our government today, a room full of democratic socialist Nazis. Indivisible, the pledge cannot be divided into different parts. That's nothing, that nothing can be taken away or changed. All things in the pledge are equal. Please, everyone who happens to hear what I'm saying, when you pledge to the allegiance, if you don't do that pledge, you're a liar or a traitor, or maybe you're both. Thank you very much, council.
Anyone else? Well, now start those that are virtual. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. I don't see anybody. All right. The city will now disable all video and microphones for those attending virtually. We have no correspondence. Oh, do we have correspondence? Oh, okay. No, it's, that's other reports, right? So next is committee reports, finance committee, please.
Finance committee met this evening. One of our main issues that we're talking about is, of course, the transition from the migration Eden to Tyler's EERP system. It's basically all of the back office program stuff for the city. We'll be bringing that to a future council meeting now, is my understanding, the way we have it scheduled to go, because it looks like next Tuesday, there's nothing on the schedule, we have nothing prepared. So unless otherwise directed, then we will be skipping the next council meeting up there Tuesday. So extra long weekend for y'all, if you can do that. Other item that we discussed at finance was budget, little mini kind of a workshop. Staff has done a great job of putting together a calendar for you guys on the budget process there. It is a biannual budget we're preparing for. Mayor and staff has been having a lot of background discussion, and right now, we targeted September 24th for kind of a little budget 101 kind of a scenario, because we have a bunch of new council members, and we can get together at a council full workshop kind of format to have a little discussion on how the budget works and the ins and outs of it. So if you have any questions and stuff on that, you can, you know, get with staff always and forever, and then we can meet together on 24th there and go over that. Those were items of business this evening.
Great, thank you. Committee Development Committee, please.
So the Committee Development Committee met on August 20th last week. We discussed Resolution R24-86, a statewide small works roster with MRSC. We also discussed Resolution 24-92, Accepting PCRC or PSRC Safety Action Plan Grant, which will, the roster was put on the consent agenda, as there's really no changes, that we already use MRSC for our roster. The resolution for accepting PSRC is on tonight's full council, and Resolution 24-93, Professional Services Agreement with SCJ Alliance for the Safety Action Plan, that is also on the full council for tonight as well.
Thank you.
Oh, we canceled, sorry, we canceled our meeting for September 3rd. Oh, we canceled, sorry, we canceled our meeting for September 3rd due to Labor Day and no agenda items. And we will reconvene. Our next meeting will be September 17th at 5:00 PM upstairs. We do welcome public. You can view us in person or online in the conference room.
Thank you. Public safety committee, please.
Oh, I guess I did public. So they did not meet this week. Their next meeting will be September 17th. No, September 10th, excuse me. At 3:45. Upstairs.
Okay, thank you. So any other reports? So move on to other reports. I'm going to turn it over to the clerk.
Yeah, I just wanted to go over something. Back on May 2nd of 2023, past council member Watson had brought forward that the Conservation Futures Advisory Board needed the council to select someone to replace him when his term was up in June of 23. Unfortunately, we didn't appoint anyone yet. The position is a citizen representative for the city of Bonnie Lake as per Pierce County Code 2.96. The city's legislative body selects a candidate for it. It provides this recommendation through a formal resolution from the city council. Any candidates have to fill out an online application that is currently being advertised on our social media. And then those applications get forwarded to council for you guys to make a selection. And then we have to appoint by resolution, just to let you guys know. So needing to know kind of like a timeline of what you guys are thinking, we are over a year past due on picking someone. And they're kind of hoping sooner versus later. So how long do you want to advertise for? And then when do you want to appoint?
What's the name of that committee again, please?
The counts, the Conservation Futures Advisory Board. The board evaluates property presentations that may be eligible for acquisitions through the Conservation Futures Funds.
We haven't had anybody on it for how long?
Since June of 2023.
Do they have any committees or like monthly meetings, like where they would have to meet with PCRC or PSRC?
Yes, they do do meetings.
Okay, so they attend those meetings? Okay, yeah, we should probably start finding somebody pretty quick.
So it is being advertised on social media and I can get it up on the website tomorrow. How long do you want to leave it open for to try and get applications in by a timeline? So I can get it onto a council meeting for appointment.
One week?
No. I'd say a month.
A month?
If we know, if, if we could get, you know, like if we go on and see what you've got on there for background and what it entails, then we could each push it too and see if we know anybody that could be interested in it.
Okay.
It sounds like a month is a reasonable amount of time.
Sounds good. I'll put it on September 24th meeting for you guys to select and have a resolution.
All right, other reports, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so PCRC does not meet in August, so they did not have a meeting this month. Also, I would like to bring to the attention something that I noticed in the, the lobby tonight. When I was picking up my paperwork. So I, I pulled up the, the city policies on political signs and political materials. The city is a municipal government employee, the municipal government employees are covered by the Federal Hatch Act, which intends to protect both employees and citizens from unethical political pressures. Display and distribution of political materials. A city employee may not display or distribute election materials, or I would also say political, on any city property. The only exceptions are materials that are part of an election day staking or polling places or materials attached to private vehicles which are not used for city duties. Also, under use of city property. Employees may not campaign during working hours or on city property or use city facilities. Facilities include but are not limited to stationary, postage, computers, copy or fax machines, telephones, vehicles or other equipment, office space, agencies to print, mail, or otherwise produce or distribute campaign materials or solicit signatures from any initiatives, recall or referendums, campaign on public's owned or operated premises. Lobbying. Except as authorized by the mayor or city council or in city employee may neither lobby nor state opinions about public issues on behalf of the city or any of its departments. However, employees may express opinions about issues being clear that the opinions expressed are personal opinions and do not represent the city. However, we have a sign posted in the lobby and it appears to represent the city's opinion on a political subject. Ideological signs, ideological issues are political. They hold political value. They have financial and social value to them. Therefore, they are political. Also, the rules and regulations of federal office of personal management or personnel management and the official of special counsel pertaining to the political activities shall apply to any city employee whose job duties are in connection with programs financed in whole or in part by federal funds, federal loans or grants. So my question is, where did this sign come from? Who paid for this sign? Was it on a, is it on a loan or was it donated? And also, you know, as, as I speak right now, I'm an, I'm an elected official. So actually, I'm shaking a little bit. So is there, because this is a very sensitive subject and it's, it's very polarizing. So as I sit here, I'm wondering, do the city employees or does any citizen who is offended by a sign or thinks that this is the city's opinion, which is very political, do they have an anonymous way of filing a report? That's another question. Whether it be a compliment or whether it be a complaint. We have to allow people the safety to be able to complain without fear of retaliation. Let's see. This, this takes on a position of bias. What do we want? Dead cops. When do we want it? Now, now, now. What do we want? Dead cops. When do we want it? Now, now, now. That is violent. That is bias and that is very offensive. And I think that anybody in this room should be offended by that. I looked up that group, which I'm not going to name, and it is still defund the police. We in Bonnie Lake have taken a stance that we fund our police. We fund the people who defend us and keep us safe. So my question is, again, where did this sign come from? Who authorized it? Was it paid for? Who was it paid for by? Was this, is this on loan or is it donated? And when can it come down? So I would like to have these questions answered.
We get back to you with those answers or do you want them answered like as much as we can now? Like we're what is, what is it that you're asking specifically? If I may, so the print was donated to Judge Joanna Daniels. It has a value of approximately $250. The finance department has identified in code is issuing the artist a gift receipt. The community court funding paid for the framing and it was hung at the judge's request and she is here this evening.
Okay, so it was paid for at the grant's funding?
The framing.
The framing?
Framing.
Okay.
It's also donated, the framing was paid for through community court funding.
What amount of expenses on a grant funding needs to go through finance committee? When, when we're, who approved, who authorized and approved that spending and did it come through finance committee? And was council asked if it was okay to hang a political sign? Which our, our city code, our policy obviously states that we do not allow any political signs to be placed in any of our buildings, agencies, parking lots, parks, office space. So why was council not asked if this sign could be hung?
So the, the policy you're referring to, I believe, is regarding political activity. There's another policy regarding display of artwork in the, in the city premises. And the lobby is identified as an appropriate location for displaying of our public art.
The, the, the art is very biased. I'm walking into the Justice Center. We have a courtroom here. Justice is supposed to be blind. That is not blind. That has a very ideological statement. And it also brings to fact that it creates a hostile work environment for employees who look at that. And maybe they don't agree, but now they have no way to anonymously complain about that because it has brought a very a fear into the mind of people who have to work here. Or how about the, the people who come into the building, who have to come into the courtroom and they see this bias on the wall that does not represent the, the city's policies or sediment. And then they have to assume that they're going to be unbiasedly, that, that this is going to not be a biased situation for them. Should they not agree with what is on the sign?
So when I first became aware of it, it was hung on the wall underneath the community court sign in the courtroom. When I became aware of it, I came down and physically removed it because it did not comply with the city's art display policy. After which I spoke to the Judge Joanna Daniels. I would ask the judge to explain it.
Okay, so lobbying. Now, mind you, this does state that this is election materials, but election materials are also political and they're ideological. Except as authorized by the mayor or city council, a city employee may neither lobby nor state opinions about public issues on behalf of the city or any of its departments. Including the court, the Justice Center, this is a department. However, employees may express opinions about issues being clear that the opinions expressed are personal opinions and do not represent the city. But this is hanging in our lobby.
Again, Judge Joanna Daniels is in attendance and I would defer to her. Judge, did you want to say anything?
Good evening, council. So the, the picture that is hung in the lobby is a copy of a poster that is hung in a number of courthouses throughout the state of Washington. It was developed for the Minority and Justice Commission in 2018. When it was offered as a gift to our community court, it was considered as a piece of art that supports the concept of inclusiveness and supports a sober support. And because it was being gifted to us, we were happy to accept it. We wanted to originally hang it in the courtroom because we thought that it was a nice statement. It went along with the, the concept of the community court. And then John had let me know that the city had a policy with regard to art and what that policy was. And so we followed that policy by providing the information regarding the name of the artist who donated the poster to the community court. By, and then we subsequently donated it to the city. And I guess the finance committee is in the process of sending a receipt to the artist. And then the administrative office of the courts authorized an expenditure of community court funding as sober support to pay for the frame, to be able to hang it appropriately. So we look at it as a piece of art and something that supports sober support and supports everyone in the community. Not as any sort of a, a negative or divisive political statement.
Okay, as a
I'm, I'm moving forward, but I have to gather my thoughts.
Just so you're aware, I had a meeting with John and the judge and in regards to the art policy. And that's why we allowed it to go into the lobby because we were looking at it as a piece of art. But I understand your concern in regards to this. I think it's something we can definitely look at as far as a different policy that we were not looking at at the time.
Right. In my mind, that it's not art. It's a political statement. It doesn't show. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're providing justice for all. I, I believe that you are not a biased judge. You are using blind justice, justice, Lady Justice is blind. She has the blindfold on. Those things need to be equal. But there's, there is political groups that are on that. And just the word also brings about stress. And
You mean the word diversity?
Yes. Can bring about stress. If you are in an environment that deals with If you are in an environment that deals with diversity, equity, and inclusion, where you don't have a voice and it's considered to be hate speech if you don't approve or don't, don't have this, don't share the opinion of that ideology, then you are considered hate speech and you can be terminated. That's why I think it's extremely important that the employees here at the city, as well as the citizens or anyone who's coming to the court system, needs to have the ability to feel safe, to complain anonymously if they're, if they feel threatened by that sign. But it's the ring that one of the, one of the letters is wearing. That is, in my mind, that's a hate group. And I can't... I, I can't justify having, feeling like, right now, just feeling like I'm opposed to this poster. I'm opposed to this art makes me a target now for hate. Right? So that's going to be all over social media that Councilmember Fullerton brought up this diversity sign.
Well, I think it's important with your position as a, a councilperson that if you see something like this, that you bring it to the attention of the other council members and to the members of the city. I think that is very important. I think that you are seeing something in this poster that I didn't necessarily see or other people that looked at it didn't see. I don't think Mayor Carter has the same perspective when he looked at it and we were talking about it. And I don't think that Mr. Avodovich had that perspective either. And perhaps we could talk about this some more?
Yes.
I, I would be happy to, to meet with you and talk to you about it.
Okay. All right, so that's that.
And I, and I'd like to offer my apology to you if I have somehow offended you.
I, I appreciate that.
It was not intended to...
No, I, I absolutely agree. I, I know that it wasn't an intention. I just, I feel like it's, it doesn't go with the sediments of the city and anything, any artwork or signs or anything that we post. We, we need to make sure that it is content neutral. It needs to not have something that can be construed as political or polarizing or divisive or divisive. You know, you've got polarization where some people may see that sign. It's like two positive magnets trying to connect and it's going the opposite direction.
You do know that I see people like this every day in the courtroom, right? And our court staff deals with people like this every day.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Any further comments on that? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Oh, sorry. That was, you know, Deputy Mayor Swatman.
In a second.
Ms. McLeimans. All right. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Good. All right, we have full council issues. Item A, Madam Clerk.
This is item A, AB 2469, ordinance D 2469. The council motion would be to amend ordinance number 1715 relating to salaries for nonrepresented employees providing for servability and corrections and establishing an effective date.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
It says 15 minutes. Did we have a discussion on it?
Sure. So this proposed action would set the nonrepresented employees' cost of living adjustments for 2025 and 2026, 4% in January 1st of 2025, and then 3% in January 1st of 2026. These are the same amounts that council has previously approved for AFSCME represented employees, the Assistant Police Chief Guild, and then the Police Guild Support Staff. So it's commensurate with what represented staff are receiving in 2025 and 2026.
Councilmember Hubler.
Since we get our awesome CFO here tonight, which is amazing.
I just am not always present.
Right. You're here in person, so it's different. Does this fit within our upcoming budget?
Yeah, so I kind of expected this question. I also want to add real quick, hourly employees would be in this, and they've been missed all these years. They've not been in a, a salary ordinance. And so, you know, sometimes I get a, a call saying, can, can we budget for this off the cuff? So this will also include the hourly people. I have programmed this in with our current budget model. After speaking with the mayor and John, we felt it was important to let staff know that, you know, the nonrepresented and hourly, that they're, they're cared about as equally as the people that are represented. So like John said, he did it consistent with what the rest of the groups are getting.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Yeah, thank you. Again, this is matching it up with, you usually don't, we usually can't do this until the end of the year because it's, we don't know about some of the other contracts coming through. So we're trying to match up the salaries for the non reps with the representative contracts that have already been passed. So that works out great for me. Just recognizing again, of course, that, you know, that nothing gets done in the city without employees. We can talk all day long, but without the great employees that we have, we wouldn't get the things done that we wanted them to do, obviously. So we need to support those folks out there. It's really important, I think, to appropriately compensate them for their time. They choose to come here and be our employees. They could choose to go work someplace else. I want them to stay here if they're good employees. If they're not so good employees, maybe the mayor could have a conversation with them. But until then, I fully support this ordinance to make sure that employees are compensated fully and appropriately. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you. Further comments? I'll take it to a vote. All in favor of ordinance D 2469, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Very good. And Clerk, the next item, please.
This is item B, AB 2488, ordinance D 2488. The council motion would be to amend Bonny Lake Municipal Code Chapter 9.10 and adding section 9.10.030.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got that taken care of. And discussion on this item? Discussion? All right. All in favor of ordinance D 2488, say aye.
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 Was opposed? Very good. Madam Clerk, next item.
This is item C, AB 2474, resolution R 2474. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a two-year contract with Flock Safety for Flock cameras and to accept the $179,000 grant from the Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority to fully fund this program.
Motion, so moved. Second, is there a second?
I can't.
Just jumping in there doing my own stuff. Right? Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Councilmember Fullerton.
So I actually asked if we could possibly place this, table it until the next council meeting. We don't have the chair for the public safety. I am having some second thoughts. I haven't been able to take time. I've had a pretty busy month this month, and I would have liked to meet possibly with Police Chief and Councilmember Baldwin, the Chair of Public Safety, and have some more questions answered. We, we put it, we didn't put it on the consent agenda because we wanted to have the Chair of Public Safety, Councilmember Baldwin, to be able to ask her questions. I did ask her, and she seemed like she might have some questions also. But if you guys are going to pass it and approve it, I, I was just wondering if we could table it for, if it's not an urgency, like within the next two weeks, if we could put it on to another council meeting?
Chief, is there any kind of urgency to getting this done immediately?
No, we've been working on this since May. I have not received any questions that I have not answered. But the council needs more time. The council needs more time.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments by Councilmember Fullerton to recognize that the Chair of the Public Safety Committee is not present to lead us in this discussion. I'd be interested to get her input on it. I think it's an important tool. I really look forward to getting it deployed out there. It looks like it could really be, again, very useful to the Police Department. There are, of course, a lot of other concerns, but I don't think those really trump the fact that this is a tool that they need to do their work with. On a side note, if it does get, happen to get tabled for a couple of meetings there or what have you, is there actually, because it talks about in there, it talks about the Exhibit C being the customer obligations in Section 10.4. Is there, did that get included in the packet or something? Because that was, I don't know if the council's, what the customer obligation, meaning us, City of Bonny Lake, would be to that. It references that in the agreement. And I don't know if that, you know, wanted to quantify so they make sure that they know what our cost is going to be or under that customer obligation piece.
So the customer obligations is part of the, the master service agreement, the contract. It should be within that. We are still working with Flock to design the exact system because we don't have the infrastructure. We can't use stuff on DOT land. We were just denied using stuff from Puget Sound Energy. So I'm working with Flock. We're meeting multiple times a week to come up with other things. So the, the system itself is constantly changing. The directive is it can't exceed that $179,000 to include tax.
Okay.
So it might be that we sacrifice the camera here to pay for it. But as far as our financial obligations, the city will not be on the hook for anything.
Excellent. Yep, thank you. Councilmember Hubler.
I will say I have had citizens within the city come and ask if we did pass this forward to council. And I had told them we passed it out of public safety at our last meeting. And everybody that I've talked to so far has been very supportive of this system. So I think it's, I mean, I, I know Angela's probably, you know, Councilmember Baldwin's probably going to have, you know, other questions, but I would love to know what other questions as well so that if there are other things that are of concern, that we can all know what those are.
Should I ask my questions now or do I wait and see if, if we're gonna? I mean...
I think if, if we can answer your questions now and get to a vote, I think that would be the way to go.
Okay, so we want to try to take this to a vote then? It just feels kind of Big Brother-esque. It feels like it, you know, I know it's only supposed to take pictures of the license plate, but can citizens, is it going to take only the backside? Or is it going to take the front and back? Is this something that's going to be like up high where people's face could get put into, into those pictures? Or is it just going to be the backside? Hey, this is a silver car, this type of car, the year, make, model? And is the, is it just going to be the license plate in the back half of the car? You know?
Great question, and I'm happy to answer that for you. So yes, it's just a picture of the back of the vehicle. The way we're sure that happens is the camera has a limited field of view. So it's directionally aimed. So if you're going westbound on 410, you have to pass the pole and pass the camera for it to take a picture of you. So it can't get a picture of the driver. It can't get a picture of the front of the car. It will give a picture of the back of the car, a license plate, like you say, make, model, color. And it could do identifiers such as tinted windows, bumper stickers, roof racks, things like that. But it does not have the ability to take pictures of people's face.
And then when we talked about it last week at the workshop, you stated like if there was a hit and run at an intersection and they happened to have a picture of the car that, you know, hit somebody, T-boned them or whatever, then that would help you to identify the vehicle where it was going or whatever. So how far out is that camera going to be focused? If it can get an accident in the middle of an intersection? Or could it really get an accident in the middle of the intersection?
So ours won't actually cover the intersections because the intersections, the stops, stoplights, everything are on WASDOT infrastructure, and we can't put our cameras there. So we have to put the cameras either east or west of a location. So the way it's designed is it will take pictures of cameras as they approach intersections. It won't actually cover the actual intersection. So we would not see the accident, but we would be able to say, okay, the suspect vehicle was a maroon sedan, and we could do a search for maroon sedans in any of our cameras within that timeframe. So yes, it would definitely give us an investigative tool. Does not give us the ability to arrest somebody right there, right? It is just kind of like a reporting person calling and saying, I saw this vehicle. It gives us an investigative lead.
And then you're saying like WASDOT is not going to allow us to use any of their lights or whatever. So where is the funding coming from? The $179,000? If it's not, I was assuming it was coming from the government, from WASDOT?
It is coming from the government, but not from WASDOT. It's coming from the Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority, which is a different funding stream. So WASDOT controls the stop signs. And they are actually in conversations with Flock, State Patrol's heading up about this being a good investigative tool. But at this point in time, it's not just a Bonny Lake thing. They don't let anyone touch their infrastructure anywhere in the state.
Okay. All right. I think I got my questions answered.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a big proponent of this particular deal. I'm actually doing the same thing Chief is today, next week at Pacific, talking about the positives, potential leads given. I can tell you that we had, in, obviously in Pacific, in a different city, several homicide, hit and run with, where the driver was killed, that kind of thing. Where had this been there, we would at least have a tool and a possible lead. At this point, we have nothing. And to go to a family and tell them you have nothing, you don't know. I can't even put into words what that, how difficult that is when the technology is literally out there for us. So I think this is just a huge investigative lead. Doesn't tell them they can arrest, but it gives them a lead. They can now track down and at least investigate, find out, you know, what was going on potentially or if that person was even involved. But that, it gives them that option.
And I do want to clarify just for transparency because we've talked about traffic, you said this for traffic enforcement. We will only use this for crimes. I do want to say that there is some criminal traffic versus civil traffic. So things like speeding, not stopping for a red light, not using a turn signal, that's civil traffic. It cannot be, it'd be a violation of the contract for us to use that. And then Flock could actually pull it away from us as a tool, right? So it's not what we want to use it for. But if it's criminal traffic, a hit and run, a vehicular homicide, then that is something we'd want to, because now we're at the criminal level.
Councilmember McLeimans.
Yeah, so this looks like it's a very promising tool for, you know, criminal activity. I think though, you know, the recognition is that tools like this can also be abused. And I think that's a concern that some of us have, right? It's, it's really kind of hard to understand. I, I think we're in a place where do we understand, is public policy mature for this? And my short answer is no. So let me, let me give you an example. Under what conditions will you, as mayor, turn the Flock cameras off?
Conditions would I turn them off? Anything that obviously violated the contract or if the police were not, were investigating something on the Flock cameras that was not a crime, right? They would have to have a, typically a case number is assigned to a crime. But if they're investigating a case that actually has a case number assigned to it and that kind of thing, which is typically a criminal deal unless...
But if they're investigating a case that actually has a case number assigned to it and that kind of thing, which is typically a criminal deal, unless it's very, very rarely would something be civil. They usually figure that out later. But that would, I think that would be my, 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 my point, I guess, if you're, if you're asking that.
Yeah, I am. I'm, you know, that's where I'm like, you know, we, we're not going to, at council, we can help directly. You know, we can approve the, the spending in the infrastructure, but then we also need to influence policy. So I'm like, do we know what the policy is? I, I think the tools and the application is novel enough and is recent enough to where, you know, that, those are the questions that I'm thinking. I mean, is there a policy that needs to go with this approval to say, these are the cases where we're gonna turn, we're gonna turn the system off, right? At what point are we protecting abuses? Do we understand what those abuses are, right? I mean, when, so, so that, and that's what's in my brain. These abuses do happen, right? They're, they're very real. I doubt they're gonna happen, and I would hope they wouldn't happen in Washington State and Bonnie Lake, right? But, you know, it's just like, without policy, do we have anything there? So that was a concern of mine. I was gonna ask, I was, I was tempted to make a motion to postpone this vote for similar reasons, just because I'm still trying to find my way through the policy questions. The way I understand it is we can disable, we can just disable the system, right? If we, we think there is some reason to do it without a liability. Is that true?
Yeah, if we think that the system is being used, let's say Flock suddenly starts selling the data, then, then we can cancel the contract, right? There's, there's ways out for that. If, I don't know, federal government suddenly came and seized our system, I suppose, right? We could just unplug the cameras, right? We don't have to have the cameras up. Would that probably be some sort of contractual violation? Yeah, we're not supposed to touch their cameras, right? But if the government were to seize our camera system, that'd be a violation of the contract as well. I would like to point out, this isn't exactly new. If Bonnie Lake were to do this, we would be the 61st city in Washington State alone to have it. It's been out there for years. There haven't been any documented cases of it being used for illegitimate uses. It's been, it's a national system. So I would just say, this is not new. We're not the first ones tipping our, our toes into the water, checking it out. It has been a, a well-used system for criminal prosecution. The only paper I've written or I've read against it was an ACLU in theory paper. But there were no documented cases that actually supported those theories.
I did some research as well. I would throw out, there is, there was a, there's a lawsuit, I believe, against Flock, which I think has absolutely no merit. But it was because a police department made a mistake, a typo essentially, as they were putting a plate into Wasek and NCIC, which is a big FBI-type computer, that everybody runs their, their data through for warrants and stolen cars and that kind of thing. And because they put in bad data, garbage in, garbage out, right? Somebody got stopped, matched up the plate, the police investigated it, found out that it was wrong, sent them on their way. They were upset that the police even stopped and investigated them and then sued Flock. The reason I say they really don't have any merit is that could literally happen. The exact same thing would have happened if the police officer happened to be behind them at that same time. And so Flock really, I don't think, carries any, any liability for that. That's a, an error, essentially, that happens. As long as the officer is working in good faith, which is kind of our whole thing. If an officer is not working in good faith and something bad happens, then there's an internal investigation, there's repercussions for those things and.
Hey, so I, I think, you know, we, we obviously trust our officers with firearms, with cars, with all sorts of interesting o- other things that are, right? They have body cameras, so, you know, yeah, I get that. So I'm just wondering. You know, I'm just trying to get it, it's, it's new for me, right? And I do think, you can say there's a lot of cities out there, but until, until we see more lawsuits and things like that, right? And, you know, what are the avenues for abuse? I don't know, you know, I'm just bringing it up because that's what I'm supposed to do.
Well, I would, I think both of you have kind of brought up that you would like to table it. Do you want to do a motion to table it, or do you want to go forward with a vote?
I, I think for me, I'm okay to go forward with a vote. I don't know about council members.
Yeah, I'm not gonna make a motion to table it.
We are missing two council members, but.
Yeah, that's why, it's open for, this is council's meeting, so. Deputy Mayor Swatman.
I don't know if you've called on those council members yet, or?
No, I didn't see any hands up though, but I have my back to them, I guess.
Yeah, no, I will definitely be supporting this for the main odd reason in the first time in my career as a politician, because the people have actually told me that this is what I should be doing. I know otherwise though, and have great concerns over this, and I just wanted that to be noted that, you know, I, I know what's going on. So I'll just be quiet in that respect, but that's, that's the way it is, because I think it is a great tool. I think it'll provide a lot of value, you know, catching a lot of criminals and illegal activities. And that, that'll be a great thing for the citizens of Bonnie Lake. But there are those that know, and I'm, I'm just shocked that everybody doesn't know the Benjamin Franklin quote. And they didn't bring that up because it's a little bit out of context, of course, and it shouldn't be used in this manner, right? Of course, you know, Benjamin Franklin, and there's a great article that I stole out there. You know, those who give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety. But it's out of context to this thing, apparently, for what we're talking about. But the, the writer of this letter to the editor does go on to point out some things. And again, I'm supporting this program. I'm gonna vote yes on it, but I just want everybody to know that, you know, the Flock system is extensive. It does have the ability, ability to monitor vast areas with high-resolution cameras, advanced analytics. And it definitely challenges our Fourth Amendment rights, which I believe is the crux of the issue, which hasn't been, you know, adjudicated yet. And we'll find out later on that. That's not, not concerning my decision here. System works by obviously deploying a network of cameras in public areas, you know, and, and even private entities use this. And I think, you know, I would recommend, if I had a store, I'd love to have one hanging in my store too, you know, it'd be a great, great thing. But it's really the question that has already been answered, I think, by the public out there. You know, that they've already chosen to do this in many, many, many areas. If the Bonnie Lake chooses not to do it, in my mind, Bonnie Lake would be just this, is absent of that data to go after that criminal element. But the citizens really, it's really striking that, you know, that they're going to buy off on something, and they already have, right? That the ability to just track us and to know that, you know, Dan Swatman has been to the public library and then Fred Meyer, you know, 12 times in the last month, that's, that's fantastic. I'm, I'm impressed. Not worried myself, but it's a great tool. Yay, fun.
Councilmember Fullerton.
With that brought up. So if we are able to catch criminals, yay. But now we can't prosecute them, or we can't put them in jail.
Why not?
Can't do anything, can we?
Why not?
Absolutely, that's the whole part. Gives us evidence to have a stronger case for stronger chances of prosecution. And some of the things you've looked at over the years with COVID, right, there was a backlog of court cases. Well, these are new court cases, right? And the jail staffing is up, so we're talking about catching felony-level criminals, not misdemeanor criminals. And so we absolutely can do that. And we're working with our prosecutor's office to pass some other ordinances within the city. So where the Superior Court may fail us, we'll be able to use our own courts. So in my opinion, it's absolutely gonna help us not only with arresting criminals, but successfully prosecuting them.
And then how about Pierce County Jail? Are we able to utilize their prison space yet, or now, or?
Yes, we book people into Pierce County Jail daily, and we have contracts with three other jails currently, and we're looking at a fourth. So we try and get our people into various jails, frequently based off of cost effectiveness and what are the needs of that subject.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? I'll take that to a vote. All those in favor of passing Resolution R24-74, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
Aye.
You good with that?
So three yes, two no.
Three, two, yeah.
Okay. We could have split it for you or whatever.
Great. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
This is Item DAB 2484, Resolution R2484. The council motion would be to authorize Joanna J. Daniels' judge to sign a memorandum of understanding with Consejo Counseling and Referral Services and the Bonnie Lake Municipal Courts and Community Court to be effective from July 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2024, at no cost to the community court.
Motion.
Oh, moved.
Second. Any discussion? Councilmember Hubler.
I wanted this brought forward to full council because I thought it was really important to highlight what our community courts are doing and that this counseling organization has stepped up to the plate and has done an amazing job at offering to do the counseling for the people that are in our community courts for free to our city. And I think that our community court's been able to bring this organization in is amazing. So I want to commend our, our prosecutor's office, our courts. I don't remember the person that was on the meeting last, two weeks ago, though. That's it, Carla, for presenting it to us and, and everything. So I think it's a, an amazing opportunity for the courts to be able to have more counseling services. My understanding was the other one wasn't working out? Is that correct?
Been rectified, but we had to back away from them because of some issues with them using individuals who were not properly qualified. However, I can tell you that probably, I could tell you probably within the next month or two, we'll be bringing another motion forward to also loop those back in that agency as well, so that we will have even more services to offer to the community court participants and also to the defendants that are coming through our court who are not in the community court system.
Awesome.
And thank you for your support.
Councilmember Fullerton.
So weren't, were there some allegations or something? And so they, the, the former company actually rectified those allegations, or?
They hired some new people.
Okay.
Who are properly qualified.
Perfect.
And, and so they are in the process of getting back up and running and being able to provide the kind of services that we are demanding.
Fabulous, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of Resolution R24-84, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Madam Clerk, next item.
This is Item EAB 2492, Resolution R2492. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a subaward agreement between Puget Sound Regional Council and the City of Bonnie Lake for a safety action plan.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Excuse me. Councilmember Hubler, did you have something? Looked like you were in talk.
Gwen, yeah, Councilmember Fullerton, can you give us more backstory on this?
I'll actually have Jason go ahead and do that, since you're here to answer questions.
I'll give a quick overview, but Ken Gill, our city engineer, is here as well. He's been leading the charge on this. This was a grant application that we had submitted earlier this year for a grant through the United States Department of Transportation, through the Puget Sound Regional Council, for us to prepare a safety action plan. A safety action plan, what it does is it goes through and looks at all of the intersections and roads through your city and identifies where you're having safety issues, either between car-car collisions, car pedestrians, or pedestrians aren't walking because they don't feel safe. And it prepares a plan to identify ways to address those safety issues. The key component of this is having this safety action plan is key to opening, unlocking other grant sources for actual construction, both at the federal level, through the bipartisan infrastructure bill, which has two more rounds of funding, and also through the state funding program for safety improvements. Without this plan, those grant opportunities to build or to address those safety issues are off the table to us. It's a granting source that we are not able to attract. And that granting source is one of the grants that we're looking at to help fund the Angeline Veterans Memorial Roundabout. So the plan, basically, what it does is, as I said, the public is involved in this, the council is involved through the community outreach to identify where we need to make safety improvements on our transportation network to make people, to make it safer and prevent accidents from happening in the future. And if there's any specific questions, Ken Gill, our assistant, our city engineer is here, he can answer those.
So this was a grant that requires a match of, so I guess this will be for Ken, if you want to make your way to the podium. It, it requires a match of $30,000. And where were we planning on getting that funding from?
Planning on taking about some money left over from your study that you did for West Taps Highway. And recall, about a year ago, Jason kicked that off with the same firm to study what to do with that intersection. And so that's where the funding comes for this. The total cost of the study is $120,000. It's a reimbursable grant. So Councilmember Fullerton's correct. And when it's all said and done, we'll have 30 grand of skin in the game. Does that answer your question?
So includes like the employees payroll and all that stuff that's part of the grant?
It does, it does. So Councilmember Fullerton's right, it also pays for, in addition to your consultant time, it pays for your staff time. So that's the bonus of, that, that doesn't come along very often. So I advise you to take advantage of that opportunity. The previous two cities that I worked with that prepared this similar type of material did not have a grant supporting this study. It was funded out of their own coffers. Happy to answer any questions?
That helps me.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Or she might want to stay up there in case they have questions on the next one, which is attached to that one, but.
Any no further comments on this one? We'll take it to a vote. All in favor of Resolution R24-92, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
This is Item FAB 2493, Resolution R2493. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with SCJ Alliance to prepare a safety action plan.
Motion.
Oh, moved.
Second.
There we go, okay. Any discussion? Questions?
Can you just like give a, like, two-minute briefing on how the two of these are connected?
They're connected at the hip because this is the scope and fee that staff vetted with PSRC staff. A big thank you to Gary Simonson. He's a planner with PSRC and also Jennifer Barnes, both outstanding. PSRC staff that are real trained in helping municipal dirt and rocks engineers like me figure out what's the right things to go into a safety action plan. So Sheik Arjul has been providing traffic engineering services for the City of Bonnie Lake for the past 20 years. And they're very familiar with our, our system, this intersection. They wrote the intersection control evaluation for it. They're the most qualified to do it. They're all in our small works roster pool. If you authorize the, the grant, you need to put it to work, and this is the way you do it.
That's what the $90,000 is for, is it, it come, it, it's gonna be paid for through that $120,000 grant, minus the $30,000 match.
That's all a bunch of, a lot of math to me. The, the way I break it down is Sheik Arjul's scope in front of you is, is $90,000. The grant pays for $72,000 of it, and we've got $18,000 of skin in the game. So that's a great way to leverage your valuable funds that we need to fix some of the safety and traffic problems in this city. Does that answer questions on, on funding, on how it gets funded?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All right, we'll take this to a vote. All in favor of Resolution R24-93, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Was opposed? All right. We will, oh, thank you, appreciate it. We will now adjourn the regular council meeting and go into an executive session for 20 minutes per RCW 42.30.1404A to discuss the collective bargaining agreement with no action to follow. We are adjourned.
Member, when you're sitting there, you volunteer.
Okay.
Not going to be in this?
Yeah. Yeah. And I accepted that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. 15 right now, and everything always gets going all at the same time, so.
Don't worry about it, totally understand. I drove about 30,000.
And honestly, I think the one on the 25th, I can have to reschedule because I have clients flying in from Texas and I have two days to find my house.
Which one?
Well, I'm sorry, but we're for sure on for the other one. I'm not changing it.